Okay, it's the bottom of the hour. I'd like to go ahead and call the Planning Commission meeting for July 28th, 2025 to order. All those in attendance would please rise and join me in pledging allegiance to the flag of our country.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. We have a very small audience this evening. Hopefully, everyone is watching online, so we're gonna go ahead and get started. Any additions or deletions?
No, sir.
Okay. Announcements and reports?
No, sir.
Okay. I would like to bring up one thing. Joining us this evening, we have our alternate commissioner, Commissioner Jack Allen. Want to welcome you to the Planning Commission?
Thank you very much.
Excellent. So we have approval of minutes. You all should have received the Planning Commission minutes for the meeting on July 14th, 2025. Any comments, questions for those minutes? No? Okay. That being said, do we have a motion for approval of the minutes as presented? Okay, so a motion to approve and a second. Any other comments or questions? No? Okay. All those in favor of approving the minutes as submitted signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Minutes approved as submitted. Okay, public hearings. No public hearings this evening, I see. No old agenda items. So we're gonna go ahead and go right into the new agenda items. Item one is the request for Planning Commission to initiate a signed ordinance text amendment, and I'm gonna turn that over to staff.
Thank you. You may recall that we've had discussions just about how with the U D O coming into play, there's been staff looking into some things that the zoning ordinance may or may not be doing. That as well with the sign ordinance and so forth. But recently, there was a question brought to us by the Planning Commission as to how the wall signs apply. And so in that research, we found some things that could possibly, well, not could be, it's definitely causing conflicts in how we're operating in the planning and zoning office when it comes to issuing sign permits. So if I can kind of explain that to you, what we're asking for you tonight, once you hear this information, to give us either the yea or nay on moving forward with a text amendment. If you decide not to move forward with it, we will allow for all of the actions within the, I guess, all the items within the sign ordinance remain as is. But again, just a reminder, text amendments can only be conducted by initiation from the Planning Commission or by council. So again, we would need your permission to move it forward. So there are three sections of the code that we're having challenges with right now. So you have your definitions, you have what are listed as prohibited signs, as well as a section within the sign code that gives different provisions based on the zoning. So the first section, of course, as you're seeing here, is identifying what is a roof sign. So a roof sign, if I can just kind of go to the outline components, is erected upon or above a roof structure. It's wholly supported by a roof structure or a structure placed upon a roof, which means above, right? So it's given the opportunity so that if a sign is placed above the roof, it gives the impression of, in fact, a roof sign, because it is, it's above the roof. However, what is prohibited in the city is a roof sign. But when you go into the Section 6615, you'll see that "Building signs shall extend above the eve line or the top of the parapet of the wall." And as you know, a parapet is what that, pretty much, the boundary is that align for the wall of the roof, which means you're above the roof, but that's kind of what's keeping the, it's the walls of the roof, basically. So you'll have in red where there's a prohibition for roof signs, but then you'll see in green where it's allowing roof signs indirectly based on how a parapet is giving different provisions. So staff is asking for the opportunity to clarify, what is the city's stance? Would we like for roof signs to be prohibited altogether, even upon parapets? Or would it be where roof signs are allowed, but not, you know, will be allowed only on parapets, if I'm saying it correctly? So let me give you an example. Roof signs. We typically see roof signs as this. But they're more than just that, right? A roof sign can be seen above a roof line, but along the parapet. That's how our code allows it. One section, it says, "Above the roof line is restricted," but the second section says, "But it's allowed on a parapet." But it's not saying that unless you read several sections of the code. So we're looking for language that allows them to talk to each other and allow for your staff to be able to move an application forward or not. So again, that is us requesting to have permission to either initiate the text amendment to make those clarifications, or leave the text as is. And that concludes my report.
Okay. So I guess a question to staff. I don't recall if we've recommended. We may have, but it's been a while if we have. Have we recommended? And if we have recommended the text amendment, how exactly does that occur? Do we just make a recommendation to
Yes.
City Council?
So you make a recommendation, you agree upon yourself to initiate a text amendment.
Okay.
Once you make that recommendation, we can then move forward with allowing for the actions to take place to come back before you, and it goes to your council as a initiated text amendment by the Planning Commission with a recommendation of the following.
Okay. Okay, I guess, and I I think I'm well aware of exactly where this is coming from. And I think I may have asked a question actually of this situation a little while back, so I'm glad this is actually coming forward. I'm gonna open it up. Is there any comments from the commissioners? Any questions?
I have a question. So we are authorizing the initiation of this text amendment. Are we also providing a a recommendation on what should be prohibited and what should not?
Got it.
Or are we only saying this should go forward?
So tonight, you would be given clearance for staff to work on a text amendment.
Oh.
That text amendment will come back before you in a separate meeting with more details and more information. We will have a discussion as to how you wish for your recommendation to go to council for, against, or something new, different. That recommendation will then travel to council for a third meeting. So this is kind of the one of three meetings. First initiating, second for you to have a conversation upon the text amendment when you see the information before you, which is the second meeting, and then the third, of course, will be council's discussion, either to adopt or approve, or whatever it may be that you're recommending.
So would it be appropriate or inappropriate at this time to express our opinion as a commission on what should or should not be allowed?
If you're okay with me answering?
Sure, absolutely.
I think it's appropriate because it helps with whether you want to move it forward. So that's the conversation you would have to see if there's a need to move it forward. If not, you would then make a statement or suggestion to not have this move forward. So I think it's a discussion you can have amongst yourselves, and staff serves as supporting, you know, information for you to move it forward or not.
Process question, just since I'm new. If I understand, Shaila, then what you're saying is if we voted to go forward, and the staff works on new language,
we could amend that language or make suggestions to it once it comes back?
That is correct. So right now, you don't have the information you need to make the recommendation to council.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, sir. You will have information that gives more detail, what the code, it gives identification of code. We may give sample codes that other cities may have. We give different, more thorough information that's giving you an idea of how to state the language. Like, for example, I'll give you, I like to call it red line, where I'm having this actual text itself included with red line and what my suggestions may be with the text. Because we as staff, you know, we're seeing the challenges we're having with the black and white code. But I'm adding the red lines to show if we had this information, it would make it more simplified, because we want to ensure that we're pushing forward the initiatives of the city by the adopted code.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So I'm gonna go ahead and open it up for discussion then. I'm gonna go ahead and start to my right.
Sure, yeah. First of all, thank you for explaining all of that and all the steps associated with this. I think it's I'm glad that we're talking about this, because yes, we've seen some issues with it within the city on this. I think it warrants a greater discussion in terms of where we want to move forward with this. And I think, again, based on the way that you've laid this out, it makes sense for us to explore this further on that. So again, appreciate all the discussions that have already happened around this, and looking forward to hopefully discussing this more moving forward. I will say this, I will have questions in the future, because, again, this is obviously a complex, you know, it's a complex requirement on this, but I will save those for another day, once we get more information.
Thank you. Commissioner Chris?
Yeah, no, I think it's very appropriate that staff moves forward with exploring how to reconcile these conflicts. You know, I would like to hear from my fellow commissioners what the preference would be in terms of how we would, you know, task staff, or, you know, with providing something back to us that might be something that we would then bring, recommend to council fully, so that we don't have to have that huge discussion at that point in time. It might be helpful for them to know kind of where we're leaning. I don't have any strong feelings necessarily. I think, you know, generally speaking, as long as the signage looks nice and appropriate for the development, you know, I'm in favor of that, but what that means could be different to any individual person. But I do think it's appropriate that we try and reconcile the conflicts here. So I would love to hear from my fellow commissioners what any preferences would be.
Absolutely, yeah. Thank you. Commissioner Helferson?
Thank you for explaining all that. I do think that clarification is the key, so if there is confusion with whatever it is, we should definitely take the opportunity to be clear and concise, because I can completely understand how somebody could say, oh, you know, you can't see the roof, but the roof is there, right? Yeah, I agree with you. It is. Now, the challenge going forward that we need to keep aware of is that these types of signs, the way they're installed, are hung over the parapet. So they're not attached directly to the facade. They're hung over the top because it's cheaper, and you don't want to make any penetrations in the facade for waterproofing and things like that. So it's not just the sign, it's the sign plus arms that go over the top. So the rendering that, the image they're showing, isn't necessarily accurate. You're not gonna have a floating sign on the facade, you're gonna have a floating sign plus stuff, typically. Anyway, so that's my caution with that, but we can talk through all that next time. But in general, what you're asking for, for clarification, absolutely.
Commissioner Allen?
Brand new. I don't know how long I can use this. Brand new. But initially, I mean, the way Kenneth put it, I completely agree. I do have a question about the comment you just made, and it's not rhetorical. But if it's hung over, but it's on the face, does it matter whether it's bolted in or hung over? I don't understand the difference.
So the difference is, is if you have a sign that, wherever it's located, whether it's above or whatever, if it's surface mounted, you're not gonna have the additional structure that goes over, which takes away from the aesthetics of whatever difference you're doing. In other words, if they were to do this type of sign that could hang all the way down, and then next thing you know, we've got just a bunch of stuff that's
It's like hanging a Christmas wreath over a door.
Right.
You don't like the rods.
Right.
Okay.
So anyway, I think there's a better way to do that.
Okay.
And if we articulate what we're looking for, then we can get that. If we think it's okay that they do that, then we think it's okay.
Generally, I like the idea of a facade rather than on top, but I would love to get other people's comments, and I agree with everything that you stated you kind of on the research piece. Thank you.
Thank you. I think one of the things that I noticed when I kind of went back and looked into this previously, I think there's a little bit more than just the roof sign. I think it ties into, if you look at it from a multi-tenant standpoint also. And I think we know what the situation is with, I mean, I'll just bring it up, the situation with West Park is, you know, there's a very large sign that's basically what would be considered a roof sign. That's a multi-tenant establishment. So I think we have to consider that as we go forward also, that if we would allow, or the text ordinance would allow, or the text amendment would allow for that type of sign, that opens it up for every tenant now to have a large sign across the top, and that really doesn't look very nice, to say the least. So I think that needs to be considered also. And that is, I don't know what section that is, but I know that's tied in there when it comes to multi-tenant signage for things like that too. So it may be something we need to consider tying that together somehow. So it may get a little bigger than just a roof sign.
I'll add language for that as well.
Sure. But I do think it's something we need to take a look at. Like I said, I was kind of surprised when I saw that kind of go up, and I was like, well, that really doesn't seem like it should be there. And, you know, after I kind of looked in, I'm like, well, I agree, it's a little odd, and it doesn't agree with each other as to what things look like. So I think it's definitely something that we need to take a look at as a city. And starting that off would be to go ahead and, like I said, recommend initiation of that with city council. So any other discussion, questions?
So just questions, Chairman. Are we then kind of recommending that city staff initiate the signed ordinance text with the idea towards prohibiting roof signs? Is that sort of the leaning that we're doing here? So that's what it sounds like from the conversation.
I don't know if that's the case. I think that's something, I mean, and we don't right now, and I don't know if staff knows, I mean, we don't know what the thinking of city council is. City council may have a very specific idea of what they would like to see as part of that. And I don't know what exactly that is.
Sure, yeah, and just to, go ahead.
Okay, I'm sorry. I was just gonna add that staff can provide either way. Staff can go up or down on it, and what we can do is provide both sides of the language for or against. You can, of course, identify which you're more favorable to. You can identify that language works, or if we should go in a different direction with the language. So anything we're bringing to you is an idea of what do you think would be best, and how you believe that should move forward. So then when council receives that, they're hearing from you as a second eye to their decision.
I'd like to see both.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, you know, I don't have an opinion on this yet. I feel like, you know, would love to learn more about this, and maybe understanding the way how other cities have done similar things as well, that maybe are comparable to us. Basically, just more information in terms of understanding, would I be for this? Would I be against this? Would I, is it a blend on it? I really couldn't say. So I'd be really curious, again, obviously, I think having both sides would be a really good delivery to us. And again, just more information on this, I think ultimately will be the best for us in terms of assessing this. But at the same time, kind of what Commissioner Chris was referencing a moment ago is that I don't know what the best way to inform us is on this, because again, you may, obviously, I think it's good that we've agreed that we want to see both sides of this. But, you know, what's the right information to be presented to us? What's too much information? What's too little information? I don't know what that is. But I'm really curious what ultimately staff comes up with on this, just as a baseline, just as an understanding in terms of like, okay, here's the information, here are the pros and cons of each of these, and getting that to start with. And then obviously, we'll ask more questions, ideally get more information around this. But to start with, again, I don't know what, I don't know what the right information is on this, but I think we'll figure that out pretty quickly.
So being that we are a semi-new commission, I think it would be great if I inform a little bit more than I normally would, so that it's a little bit more explanatory. So I like to give a little history, what has been our practice, what the code calls for, and then what would be suggestive languages. And then from there, you're able to have more of a storyline. Of course, you won't just get language. It would be more so language reasoning why conflicts we're seeing. Again, sample language other cities may have. It'd be very inclusive.
Excellent, yeah, absolutely.
Yes, sir.
Perfect, thank you. Okay. So we need to make a motion, or have a motion, to recommend the initiation. Trying to think here, initiate, to recommend the initiation of a signed ordinance text amendment to council? Okay. So, motion to recommend the initiation of a signed ordinance text amendment to city council.
So moved.
Okay, so do we have
Do you want me to make the full motion? I can.
I don't want to be the person to make the motion, of course, but
I move to request staff to initiate a signed ordinance amendment recommendation for council.
Okay, perfect. Yes.
I'm sorry, you used the word initiate? You're initiating, we're not.
Okay.
If you can just take that part out, that staff is initiating, I'm sorry.
Okay. Request for staff to initiate, right? Or no, for Planning Commission to initiate
We're recommending the initiation.
That staff
Yes.
create the signed ordinance text amendment for council recommendation into the future, I guess.
Well done.
Yeah, thank you.
So, thank you. So do we have a second on that?
A second.
Okay. So we have a motion, and I'm gonna paraphrase that now.
What he said, yeah.
Yeah. So I'm gonna, so we have a motion to recommend the initiation of a signed ordinance text amendment to city council, and we have a second. Any other comments or questions? Okay. With that, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Recommendation is so approved.
Thank you.
Okay. We don't do very many of those, so it's a little different. I mean, we usually have, honestly, those usually come from city council. A lot of times, the text amendment requests or changes to the ordinance. So it's a little different for us actually to make that. And I was trying to remember the last time over the years, and I don't, I can't recall. So it's been a while if we have.
This may be a first.
It may be.
So welcome, you guys are coming in at a great time for that. But of course
We'll do better next time. Yep.
Appreciate it.
We'll have potentially lots of opportunities in the other thing.
Okay, so the next new agenda item is the building elevations, J. Alexander's 100 Marketplace Boulevard, and turn it over to staff.
Alrighty. So we have Fusion AE, which is an architecture and engineering firm, has submitted elevations for the building, for building modifications for a new tenant in the former Smokey Bones building, and that is located at 100 Marketplace Boulevard. And the zoning is G C General Commercial, but also it is in the Georgia 54 West corridor overlay right here. And that overlay goes all the way to Highway 74 and west. So that's the zoning. So because it's in the overlay district, not only does it have to meet our land development ordinance standards for architectural design, it must also respond to the design guidelines that have been adopted by city council for this overlay district. Some of those things include using all sides of the building should contain similar architectural detailing. Buildings shall utilize massing, special architectural features, and changes in roof line to emphasize building entrances. And long expanses of walls should be broken up with architectural elements. Now, obviously, this is a building that's already existing, but staff feels that some of the design modifications being proposed do respond to these items and make the building actually stronger. You can see, you can see here on the front facade, so this, and we can go through these one at a time. There, the before and after comparisons of the existing building, say here, this is the, we're calling this the front, this is where the entrance is, and before and after. So what they've done here is they've proposed a whole new look for the entrance feature. They are maintaining the canopy but changing colors, and they've also added changing out, see these sort of, I'll call them tower elements, they're not exactly towers, but they currently are all brick with a painted brick outline, which does give it some accent, but they've taken it another step, and they're adding stone in these sections here to make these corner pieces stand out even more. So that's your main area of changes here is with the front entrance. Then here you have the right side elevation, which I believe is over here. Very similar, except for these changes to those end features. The rear elevation, which is, I think, back here. Again, just the changes here. They also are proposing to update the enclosure for the trash, the trash dumpsters, adding some new gates to spruce that up. And then the left side elevation, you can see, again, maintaining the existing canopies, changing color, and adding that stone accent area. So, continuing on, of course, as you know, per the land development ordinance, now leaving the design guidelines and going back to the to the land development ordinance, states that facade should be 80%, the front facade should be 80% primary materials, which is typically bricker stone, and side facade should be at least 50% primary materials. Since the stone, stone is considered a primary material, that change from the brick to stone on those end features will not change the amount of primary materials on basically all three sides. The rear and both sides will remain 100% primary materials. The front facade does have a bit of a reduction in primary materials from the existing, as they are replacing with the entrance feature modification, they're replacing some of the brick with ephesus, painted ephesus, so right there behind where they're showing a sign. These columns will be stone. So the new percentage of primary materials on the front facade is 77%. I'll just, can speak about the colors briefly. So the design, back to the design guidelines, they do specify materials and colors for architectural finishes, and that the colors and materials selected for any given building should be substantially the same or equal to those specified in the design guidelines. And the colors, these are the colors and materials proposed here. The the, let's see, did I? No, okay. You have in your packet some comparisons of what the design guidelines specify for materials and colors with some of the materials that are being proposed. I did not include those here. But for instance, this, the stone, Coronado Stone Texas Cream, is very similar in color to the cast to the cast, the stone that's specified in the design guidelines by a company called Rock Cast, and the color is creme, creme buff. So very neutral and with a slight beige tone. Ephors, and the ephors being, the color for the ephors being proposed is this soft white by this STO Corp. company, and it is almost identical to the color proposed in the guidelines, which is soft white by Stucco Flex. Metal canopies will remain, but will have a new color, copper, shown here. There is no color specified in the design guidelines for building canopies. The accent brick, I think is proposed to be repainted, same color. Lost my, there it is. Well, anyway. The dark outlines around the stone, and painted brick is permitted in the design guidelines, and I thought you would find that interesting because in the regular ordinance, brick should not be painted. So, a little change there to bring to your attention. And again, new gate doors for the existing trash enclosure are proposed to be metal, a matte black metal, which is similar to the trim color in the design guidelines called Weather Vane by Sherwin-Williams. So staff feels the proposed colors and materials are substantially the same as those listed in the design guidelines, and again, also feel that the redesign of the entrance and the stone veneer added to emphasize the architectural features, the building corners, all meet the design guideline requirements. Just a, just a quick mention, as you know, signage that's shown on the building elevations is not part of this review for approval, and that will require a separate staff review and a permit. And the guidelines, the design guidelines for the overlay district do contain some requirements for signage in addition to our regular sign ordinance, and all those will be taken into consideration when the, when the proposed signage is reviewed.
Great. Thank you very much.
And I, I, this is more telling of what the proposal is, but here are some black and white elevations if you want to refer to those at all. Looks like I lost my percentages for some of those, they must have gotten hidden. Anyway, 100 percent, 77 percent, 100, 100. And believe the applicant, someone representing the applicant is here.
Okay. That's what I was just going to ask, is the applicant or applicant representative here? Please go to the podium and give your name and your company.
Matt Rowley, construction manager for J. Alexander's.
Okay, welcome. Do you have anything to, to add to staff's presentation?
No, I think that our design team did a fair job of presenting, you know, some new elements that were in line with the overall brand while still meeting the guidelines of the city.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, I'm going to open it up for questions to start. I'm going to go ahead and look to Commissioner Allen. Any questions of staff or the applicant?
I do have a question of the applicant. I've never heard of the, the front was going to be white ephors? What's that?
Ephors is a manufactured product, similar with a stucco type application on the front end of it. It's an all-weather covering, cost-effective manner of getting off that overall stone look in the front area.
Is it, it's not the styrofoam that they've used at some of the homes, is it?
There are a number of different brands and applications and styles, but it does, depending on what product you decide to go with, there can be a styrofoam backing on there as a weather barrier or an additional insulation value.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else, Commissioner? Commissioner Halverson?
Can I go last?
Yeah, but you may. Commissioner Criss?
No questions at this time.
Commissioner Hammer?
No questions.
Okay, and I don't have any other questions either, so-
I came around quickly.
Yes. Commissioner Halverson, questions?
Questions. Well, first, I'd like to say thank you to the staff for their review. I thought they did a great job.
Thank you.
Very articulate. The design does meet the requirements, as Lori stated. But I do have some comments, aesthetic comments, from the design point of view. And I'm treading on subjectivity, so I take it with a grain of salt. So the, the initial building, as you can see it, is a concrete box that's articulated with some elements that are attached to it, right? So the articulation of the elements that are attached to it are different than the box itself. What's happening with the new design is that there seems to be a confusion, or there's almost too much articulation between the new entrance, which becomes prominent, which then overpowers the box, which then needs to be balanced by adding additional color to the sides to balance it back out. And then the color of the canopy, in my opinion, gets blended in with the box, so then it loses its hierarchy. So in other words, the pieces that should be attached to it should be different, or look really different than kind of blending in. So, you know, the, the little columns that are under, holding up the canopy with the stone don't make sense to me, or sexually. But that's my opinion. You've met the requirements, so I can't tell you no, but if I were to make a recommendation, I would say articulate the canopy's different than the rest of the, the project. The other thing you can do, you being the construction manager, you know that when you open up that facade and add the, the other stone back in there, you've got a water issue. So you could put a rain screen over it and not even get into it, which would be faster and probably look better, maybe even cheaper. So that would be something else you could look into. You get the similar look, but you do open joints and you're done. Anyway, if you are interested in doing some discussion on the sidebar, I'd be happy to, but otherwise, those are kind of my, oh, the last comment, and I know it has to do with signage, which you're going to approve separately, under a separate permit. I'm not an advocate for hanging that sign out over the canopies on the other side, because you're hanging it out like three, four feet.
So it's, one, thank you for your comments, and it's fortunate, I think, usually you have somebody from the design team representing here. I'm just the construction guy, so all of your comments, I will duly report back, and they can change it to whatever we needed to. No, we are open to suggestions and, and are very, can be fluid in the manner with which we kind of put the final in design, so definitely appreciate the feedback. The signage directly related to the previous conversation that was had in maintaining below that roofline, where it transitions from the roof above the parapet, so we will be very interested in the outcome of that further conversation for you guys as well.
May I make a suggestion, Commissioner?
Absolutely.
And it's all it is, but I've owned two different homes in Peachtree City that were stucco, and then had columns on the corners of the home and over the keystone that were meant to look like stone, but they were painted styrofoam and were riddled with bird nests. They just keep digging holes. So I would stay away from anything that's soft. It will ruin the facade for you.
Noticed, thank you.
Thank you.
I will say, if you're going to use ephors anywhere, Stow is probably the best product you can buy.
I would agree with that statement.
So, I don't ever use it on my projects, but if I have to, I will use Stow.
So you're saying, I think that all of it would be outside the envelope of the building itself, inside just in that entry.
Yeah, you're good.
And, and just a, a comment, what we've, and exactly what Commissioner Halverson said, you know, it meets, it meets the requirements of, of the 54 West, you know, overlay and in the design guidelines. And, and what we, what we're able to do is make suggestions, and that's what they are.
Sure.
And what's been done in the past is that, you know, we've actually been able to, whether it's, you know, representative, work with the applicant as well as staff to kind of go over some, some items. And if, if staff is, is open to that, I think that's probably the best way, way to handle it, if, if that's okay with Shayla and Laura. I think that's usually just kind of flush everything out and come up with the best, best design possible. Instead of going back and forth at this point, be able to go ahead and just, like I said, get with the applicant and get with staff to go over some of those suggestions to make it, to make it the best it can be. And, and it sounds like you're open to that, if, if that's the case.
Yeah, certainly.
Okay. Excellent. Excellent. Comments, Commissioner Criss?
Just appreciate the, the reinvestment into the property, right? I think that's always appreciated from a community standpoint, and I just want to state that. You know, it's nice to hear some of the comments from our fellow commissioners, but it's, it's nice that you're not just putting new sign on and moving back into that building, reinvesting in it, making it look fresh and, and nice and new is appreciated from my standpoint, so thank you.
Commissioner Hammer?
I now have to echo what Commissioner Criss said, because he took my talking point on that. But no, we always appreciate a reinvestment in commercial properties like this, and overall, I think this looks really good. Just want to call out one thing, though, which, again, we've, we've acknowledged on this, but the front facade materials do fall short of that 80 percent requirement for primary materials on that. But having said that, you know, this absolutely, I would argue, still fits the spirit of that requirement. We've also, you know, for example, when the, the Jefferson Brown building was being talked about around McIntosh Lake, you know, we were saying like, oh, well, you know, if we can, we can, we can have some leeway around that. Now, obviously, that was far away for, when it was initially presented to us, but I just want to call that out because, again, you know, we do have a precedent in terms of, you know, of trying to, of course, work with developers and when, you know, it's, it's fitting the spirit of the requirement. And again, we've talked about that in the past. So I just want to call that out in particular, because again, 77 percent, obviously very close to 80 percent, and again, I, I would argue again, it still fits the spirit of the requirement that we have right here, and I think we should not have that be anything that holds us back.
And, and I, I agree with that. I, you know, we, we always tried, whatever we do, and I always say, whatever we do, whatever we decide sets a precedent. Whether it's, it's good or bad, it, it sets a precedent. You know, I think in this case, looking at it from a standpoint of exactly what you said, you know, it's 77 percent, it's, 80 is the requirement. I personally, looking at it, don't have an issue with that. I, I think, again, it, it meets the, the spirit of the requirement from that. I'm really glad to see the refresh on, on the property. You know, it was unfortunately looking a bit dated from over the years, so having this new refresh is, is excellent. And from a business standpoint, it's great, great to see a new establishment restaurant coming in, that we really don't have anything like this in, in the area. As far as I'm aware, there's just a few, and actually in the state of Georgia. This may be third or fourth or something.
I think third.
Third. So for, for us to be able to have this in Peachtree City is, is excellent. And I think, you know, if we're able to go ahead and, and work with, with you and J. Alexander's to, to go ahead and get it to the best it can be within, within reason, I, I think that would be great.
So you would like to table this? Is that what you're thinking?
No, I, I don't think we need to table it. I, I think we could go ahead and have a motion to, I'm sorry.
No, no, I was going to explain.
Yeah. I was just going to say, I, I think we can have a motion if, if we look to approve it with the-
I guess you're asking for suggestions, or, well, something for staff to be able to-
Yes. That, that Commissioner Halverson would be able to, to get with staff and, and the applicant to go ahead and go over some of the, some of the items.
Okay, gotcha.
And, and we've done that in the past, and I think that's probably the best way to, to handle it.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
One, just interjection within that, and certainly appreciate all your thoughts and comments. We are excited about being involved here and the investment and, and getting started in this community. We're also excited about getting started with the project as well.
Understand, yes.
And we'd like to move forward with construction documents, and, and again, we'd be more than happy to work with suggestions or anybody on the staff to kind of further make adjustments or any potential changes on the elevations as we're moving forward, you know, simultaneously with the, with the other permits in the middle.
Sure. No, I understand completely. We don't want to hold anything up. I, I think that should be a fairly quick process, if, if I'm thinking the way I'm thinking.
Very simple.
Yeah. So if, if we could go ahead and arrange that, that would be, that would be great.
Fantastic.
Okay.
So-
Go ahead, Laura.
Go ahead and make that motion.
Yes. Okay, so do we have a motion?
Andrew says not me.
Do we have a motion from the dais? I'm looking, looking to my left.
How are we supposed to say that?
It would be that recommend, or a motion to recommend, a motion to approve-
Yeah. The building elevations.
The building elevations with the, and I'm trying to think, it's not a stipulation.
I couldn't say, you could say-
It is kind of, it's a condition.
With a condition, yes, thank you. With a condition that the applicant, and I'm going to go ahead and input Commissioner Halverson, work with staff to, to discuss a couple suggestions for improvement, is, is how I would phrase it.
I'm going to try and articulate that.
Please.
Before you make the motion, Chairman, can I ask a favor?
Yes.
You said making suggestions for improvements, but I, I would like to ask you to be a little bit more detailed for staff as well, for us to know what those are.
Okay, absolutely. Any specifics?
So, so let's, maybe we should talk about this.
Sure.
So, I mean, it sounds like the, the color of the, the metal awnings was the most egregious in your mind, maybe? Or what you, what you would prefer to change the most, is that true?
I think that's the easiest fix.
Okay, okay.
Because it's just paint.
Okay.
The harder one is going to be the material of the vertical columns at the corners, which I think what I'm going to suggest is going to be easier and faster and better, which I think you would agree with me on that.
I like all those things.
Yeah. And there's a lot more flexibility in it, because the material that's being suggested is a hand-laid stacked material that has a lot of waterproofing issues. I mean, if this is what they want to do, they can do it. But I think there's potentially a cleaner way to do it.
Okay.
So, quick question on the process. Are we holding the builder, the J. Alexander's, to whatever suggestions that are made?
No, they can, they can move ahead because it meets the requirements as of right now.
Okay.
What we're, what we're proposing is to approve with, with condition on the, with the suggestions of the, the canopy color as well as the, the column material.
Okay.
Suggestions.
Thank you.
But they can, they, they are approved, if it's approved, they can move ahead with the construction as, as submitted.
Thank you, Chairman.
Yep. Sorry.
Do you want me to try? Please. All right. All right.
I appreciate that.
So, move to approve the building elevations for J. Alexander's at 100 Marketplace Boulevard with the conditions that staff and Commissioner Halverson work with the applicant to improve, to talk about and improve the canopy color and the materials with the, suggested for the tower elements.
Okay. I think that fits, yes. Okay, do we have a second to the motion?
I'll second.
Okay. So a motion to approve with conditions and a second, any other discussion, questions? No? Okay. All those in favor of approval signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Okay. Approved with conditions as stated. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Those are the hang of it.
And our final item is the landscape plan, storage facility, 425 Highway 74 South. Turn it back over to staff.
That is correct. So this is the new self-storage facility on Highway 74, located here in the blue rectangle. It is right, is adjacent to the Garber Collision property, Zoned GI General Industrial. And so we have their landscape plan for you tonight. Again, you know, the requirements for caliber inches of trees is based on the impervious surface area, which for this site is 70,132 square feet, and that would lead to a requirement of 210 caliber inches of canopy trees and 138 inches of understory trees. Now, section 1110 of the land development ordinance does highly encourage the preservation of existing vegetation and the- of existing vegetation, and the planning commission may permit up to a 25% reduction in the total number of trees required based on tree save areas. Now, they can't include anything saved within the 60-foot required buffer, which is this line here. But they have, they have shown an area of vegetation to be saved there in the amount of 6,206 square feet, which is, which would amount to a 5% reduction, and that would reduce the reduc-, uh, would reduce the inches required to 200, 200 inches of canopy trees, so that's down by 10 inches, and 131 inches of understory trees, so that's a reduction of eight, uh, seven inches, sorry. But then if you're a little more curious about how that was calculated, that's in your packet. Their proposal is for 114 inches of canopy trees, which is 57% of that reduced requirement, and 70 inches of understory trees, which is 53% of that reduced requirement. So they are seeking an, the alternative compliance method, and, and you can approve of that if you feel that all the trees that can reasonably, reasonably be planted on the site have been planted. So let's look at that just a little bit. I do want to point out that they have, they have some extensive retaining walls around this property. In fact, all, let's see. It runs the length here and then also around the edge of the, the detention pond, and then it stops, starts again about right here, and runs this way, and then down here, stops about right there. There was a bit of a challenge because the, the, this area is so narrow on the, on the sides. This is your curb line, right there, and right here, so between there and the property line, not a whole lot of room. And the wall, the wall structure and its foundation, and also the method of, forgive me, I don't have my notes, not a civil engineer, but how it ties back into the landscape with, I believe it's some kind of fabric. Rob, maybe you know a little bit more about that. You can't plant next, first of all, the civil engineer, the city engineer requests that you don't plant within 10 feet of the foundation of a wall. And then on the upper side, where it ties back into the land, I believe the city engineer looked at the wall details and said it was only about two feet below the surface, so you can't be digging holes in, to plant trees and cutting, you know, digging holes and penetrating that fabric that's hold, holding the wall. So, all that to say, they could not put any trees along here, here and here. And then everywhere else they have, and I believe there might have been a note on their plan, they've moved everything as much as possible to a minimum of 10 feet away from the walls. So, and then there also, you'll probably recall, there is some existing vegetation down here that they're not showing, that the Gerber folks had to plant because they removed the buffer in order to make room for the deceleration lane into the property. Of course, they share, they share this entrance drive, so these will be worked around as best they can, the existing vegetation. There is also, you probably noticed, some sewer easements that they can't plant in, and they're sort of right on the edge, but this is a sewer easement, this is an easement as well, so... They've squeezed them in there the best they can. And then all of these trees that are being proposed, red maple, black tupelo or black gum, red bud, eastern, the brody eastern red cedar, which is more of a columnar shape compared to just the regular eastern red cedar, dogwood, scarlet oak and a bald, bald cy-, bald, sorry, bald cypress, this is the black tupelo, red bud, dogwood, let's see, this is the maple and this is the oak. And that's all I have.
Thank you, staff. Is the applicant or applicant representative here this evening?
They are not.
They're not, okay. So I'm gonna open it up for questions to staff then, and if there is a question to the applicant, we'll have to ask staff to go ahead and pass that along. I'm gonna start to my right, Commissioner Hamner?
No questions for staff.
Commissioner Chris?
Thank you, Laura, for, for that explanation. It's, it sounds like the city engineer had no further concerns with this, is that correct?
Um, that's correct.
Okay, great. No further questions.
Commissioner Halverson?
Unfortunately, I always have questions. Thank you, Lori, you did a great job, as usual. I think it would be good for us to understand, maybe not today, from the city engineer, what the alternatives to that retention pond could be, considering the limited amount of landscaping they were able to provide with the pond.
Right.
I know from experience, there are all, there are alternatives, but I don't know if Peachtree City allows them, which are below-grade retainage containers that are built in modules, so that all of the rainwater goes there and it's stored and, and it's released over time, similar to what that does.
I think we have another property on dividend that is doing some sort of underground storage tank.
Okay. So, I, I, I'm guessing that the, what they're proposing and what the payment penalty would be is cheaper than providing an underground storage tank? I don't know. But, um... It would, it would be nice to have an alternative, but as far as any other questions for staff, I don't have any, 'cause you articulated them well.
Good, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Allen?
I have a question for you, since you seem to know a lot about this. If they put the tanks in there anywhere, I guess we're talking about something similar to a septic tank.
Correct.
Can you plant trees on top of that? Okay, now I have no further questions.
Good. Okay, and I'm gonna go ahead and go back with you for any comments?
None, thank you, sir.
Commissioner Halverson, comments?
No, sir.
Commissioner Chris?
I didn't even know that was an option, that we could do, we could, we could have an underground storage tank and plant trees on top of it. I really like that idea, and the applicant not being here does not work in their favor, unfortunately. I hate to slow up, uh...
I was gonna say, they can't change it now, the pond is already there.
The ponds are there.
Oh, the ponds there.
It was, it was approved in their construction drawings.
Okay, I see, so it's too late for that. Okay. Well, then no further comments.
Oh, well.
Commissioner Hamner?
Uh, two things. I can't recall the last time we saw a landscape plan that was this packed with this many, like...
Easements?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, crazy, but at, at the same time, it's, it's, it's impressive that they were able to accomplish this, at the same time with all the easements of like, to get all this in, is, I mean, it's interesting, it's good. Uh, and obvious, and the other comment I wanted to make is, thank you to the staff for noting as well that this is all native to the eastern U.S., and always appreciate knowing that. And, of course, for, I would say if the representative was here, I would also thank them for also putting in all the native plants.
And, and I noticed that on, on the, the legend there of, of the plants. That's actually a nice addition. Thank you for, for adding that.
That was good.
I think that really strengthens the, the native plant, you know, push that, that Kenneth has been making and, and we're all in, in favor of, so it's, it's nice to see that there. Uh, yeah, I agree. I, it'd be nice to go ahead and, and maybe get a little more background, you know, on some, some, maybe some retention options, you know, in, in the future. The only one that I recall that had any type was the pharmacy place, I think, that had the pervious area. That, I think...
Well, there is that.
Yeah, that had underground, if I remember, for, for water, but it wasn't really as much retention.
They also had a pond.
Yeah, they also had a pond, but that was the only one that I, I was aware of that had any type of true kind of underground.
Do you remember the Mija project on 407 dividend?
Yes.
Where they're adding a two-story addition to the front of their, an existing, I guess, warehouse or space. I believe that one has an underground, I think it's in the parking lot, but underground more towards the front of the property.
I think there was, you're right, yeah. Okay.
So they're not gonna plant on it, except maybe a, an island, a tree in, in a parking island, but...
But I, I'm not aware of anything that we've had where we've had any type of water retention and then be able to do plantings on it, so that's actually a, a very interesting thing that we'll have to take a look at.
But we could maybe see if the city engineer would like to come and give you a little presentation.
Yeah, yeah. Maybe something that, that we need to consider as a city going forward, if it is an option, that, that can be done, that'd be great.
Yeah.
Okay. I don't have anything else. Anything else from the commissioners?
No.
Okay, so do we have a motion for the landscaping plan?
Motion to approve the landscape plan at the storage facility located at 425 Highway 74 South, as submitted.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve the landscape plan, storage facility 425 Highway 74 South, as submitted. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve as submitted, and a second. Any other comments or questions? None. Okay, so all those in favor of approving the landscape plan, storage facility 425 Highway 74 South, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Okay, landscape plan, storage facility 425 Highway 74 South is approved. Okay, I think that is our, we have no workshop items, so I think that is our last item for this evening. Anything from staff? That's always a question, and thank you for putting it up there. So August 11th is the next meeting. Anything in particular we should know of at this time? You know, I was gonna ask that.
So, yes, you will have, right now, three to four text amendments on that agenda. The others have been initiated by city council.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Okay, anything else from the commissioners? So do we have a motion to adjourn?
Subdued.
Okay, we have a motion to adjourn, a second?
A second.
Motion to adjourn and second. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.